Good morning. I call to order the November 17, 2020 meeting of the Saline County Board of Commissioners. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Commissioner Shadwick?
Here.
Commissioner Sparks?
Here.
Commissioner Ridgerson?
Here.
Commissioner Weis?
Here.
Commissioner White?
Here. I ask you please stand and join me in a flag salute, followed by a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God and indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We now move to the citizens' input portion of our meeting where citizens may speak on county government, usually limited to three minutes, and pertaining to items that are not on today's agenda, does anyone wish to address the commission? Seeing no one, I'll bring it back to the commission for regular business. The consent agenda today will consist of approval of tax rule adjustments, approval of accounts payable and payroll, approval of public forum agenda as presented. Are there any commissioners who wish to amend or reject anything that's on the agenda for today?
Nope.
Hearing no objection, the consent agenda will stand as approved. We'll move to action. Items, item number one.
Resolution 20-2297, review of Section 6, the mask mandate with Laura Lee Tibbetts from the Health Department.
Morning, Laura Lee.
Good morning. I'm filling in for Jason today, and this is his report, and I'm happy to present it. So this is just an update for the last two weeks of what's been going on with COVID in Saline County. Want to move to the next screen, please? The next screen basically shows that in the last two weeks in the U.S., there have been an additional 1,846,803 cases and sadly, an additional 15,421 deaths, and that is just in the last two weeks. Next slide. In the last two weeks in Kansas, there have been an additional 33,514 cases, 538 additional hospitalizations, 220 deaths. So not a pretty picture. Next slide, please. In Saline County, in the last two weeks, we've had an additional 504 cases, and I went and looked this morning, and even since this was reported, we've had an additional 42 cases just this morning. There are 26 people at this point that are hospitalized. That number 24 was updated by Hannity at 26, so the slide is just a little off. Next slide, please. As you can see, the case count in Saline County is steadily climbing. It's pretty clear that each month has seen more cases than the previous month, but the rate is increasing rapidly. We have already seen 100 more cases in the first half of November than the whole previous month. At our current rate, we could easily see more than 1,000 cases this month. With the significant increase, we are having a hard time keeping up with doing the contact tracing, and it's becoming more and more difficult to do this in a timely manner. Our clinic contact traces are doing the absolute best that they can, but it is very difficult to stay on top of this. Next slide, please. Again, you can just see the steadily increasing number of cases by the bar chart. Next slide, please. So what's next? Well, we're hoping that the vaccine will be along in a few weeks. However, there are a lot of weeks between now and then. We all need to remember to take additional measures and consider mask gathering limits. The success of any measure is dependent upon everyone in the community doing their part, so please wear your mask. Something that the CDC just came out with on the 10th of November is that they are now saying that wearing a mask can help protect you, not just those around you, which is a bit of new information that really wasn't out there, even though it seems obvious, but wearing a mask also protects yourself, not just the other people around you. So that's good to note. Next slide, please. So with the holidays coming up, we're trying to focus on what we can do instead of basically being the person always saying, "No, you can't do this. No, you can't do that." So what we're hoping to tell people to do is just to do things small. Keep it in your home. Try to have, you know, special events that you can have and remember, maybe do Zoom Thanksgiving or something, but just try to keep these gatherings small. Don't travel if you don't need to. Next slide, please. This is the link to some Thanksgiving tips with regard to, again, what I just mentioned with regard to just trying to keep it small, doing things within your own home, trying not to have massive gatherings in your home where people come from multiple states. The last slide is basically just trying to tell everybody that this really only is going to work if everyone does their part. Everyone needs to be concerned about themselves and everyone around them and just show some compassion because this is difficult for everyone. So please remind people that when they call the Health Department, we're doing the absolute best we can, and we really do wish for the very best for everyone and hope that everyone has a safe and happy holiday season. And that's the end of my presentation.
All right, thank you. I'll tackle the very easiest part of this very quickly, and that is on the resolution, the consensus of the commission, I assume would be to continue the resolution of wearing a mask.
Absolutely.
Correct?
Yep.
And that having been said, it's quite obvious that just wearing a mask isn't working, and we need to take some other steps, and pretty harsh steps and pretty quick steps. I don't want to get into a knee-jerk reaction. You know, it's like voting on a mass gathering as an example that you mentioned there. I think that's certainly something that should be addressed for us to just take it on today and say, "We're going to limit it to 50 people or 20 people," or whatever that number is. We have to have a little background on this and to go that way. And I think later in the meeting, we will be addressing this a little further. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Philip Smith Haynes County Administrator. So yes, absolutely. Under my report, I wanted to talk to you about my attendance at last night's Salina City Commission meeting and a letter that they've sent to you. But while we're on the topic of the mask mandate specifically, I wanted to let you know that the Salina City Commission last night directed their staff to bring back next Monday an amendment to the mask ordinance for the city of Salina, which would amend the Section 2 language to basically delete the words "six feet." So under Section 2A, rather than saying "inside any indoor public space where a distancing of six feet at all times is not possible," it will just say "inside any indoor public space at all times." So that will be coming to the City Commission for Action next Monday. Part of the rationale of the county resolution was to align it with the city commission's ordinance so that there was a uniform set of rules throughout the community. So I'm just throwing that out there in case your commission wants to take any sort of action to align with that effective next Monday or what have you, if you want staff to bring it back next Tuesday, so.
I guess my feeling would be that you, the administration, would prepare us something that would align with the city. Obviously, our meeting dates being one day behind theirs, they're a step ahead of us, and, you know, we do need to work in conjunction with this. And so I would like to, I hope the other commissioners would agree with me, to instruct you to, you know, come up with a plan similar to what they've got next week, and then we can vote on it and say yes or say no.
Yes, please.
But we do need to have a plan. Please bring it Tuesday.
I would, just a couple of questions. Did they, and I feel a little badly talking about this since I own a restaurant, but from my other restaurant friends, was there any further discussion on what that meant about it all the time indoors?
There was some discussion of that. There were discussions of a lot of different things at the city commission meeting, but basically, that amendment is to the requirement under Section 2, but then the exceptions are, sorry, they're under a later section, Section 4, I believe it is. And so there would still be, I don't believe they're intending to amend that exception for restaurants and bars, but they did talk about, you know, what constitutes eating and drinking, that there is a lot of, anecdotally, I don't think there's any, you know, studies of this, but it seems like what people have observed, there is a lot of, okay, you pull your mask down to take a drink, and then you just leave it off for the remainder of the time you're seated at your table, whether you're actually eating or drinking or not. So there was discussion of that. There was not specific direction to staff to amend that. Like I said, the direction was really about that, "six feet," and the thought was that there was just a lot of in businesses, you know, there's just a lot of people who pull down their masks when there's not somebody right there with them, and that was a way to message essentially that they want this mandate to be stronger.
Did they talk anything about the fieldhouse? I know that we were just shocked to see an event there Saturday, and that was...
They did discuss that, and I can get into that a little bit more later, what else they talked about, but I just wanted to bring the mask piece specifically while we're...
I have a question on the mask. If, you know, and I watched the entire city meeting, so I mean, but it still, you know, kind of flies through there every once in a while. But on the mask, let's just take your office as an example. You're in the building, you're in an office by yourself. Would that include that you would have to wear a mask at that time while you're in that office by yourself, that confined area?
So again, there, in the definition of a public space, it is, does not include private residential properties or private offices or workspaces that are not open to customers or public visitors. So my office is, my individual office is typically not open to the public unless I go up front and, you know, invite somebody back. So I probably wouldn't have to wear a mask as long as I'm at my desk, but for example, Linda and Colleen would have to wear the masks all day rather than just when somebody came into the office.
Okay. Well, again, I mean, there's going to be so many questions for us to address, and I know that we can get into that later in our meeting here, but in an effort to stay with our agenda, why, we'll take this up in a few minutes.
I will, while Laura Lee is here. The governor kind of took the lead when this first happened in March or April, and counties were left to react to that, and that was fine. Doesn't seem that that's happening right now. So there's a lot of piecemeal things that you read about in the paper. Have you studied anything about what do you think works that other counties are thinking about? I mean, I know...
I wish that I had some answers for you. I think the thing that needs to happen is people just need to be more diligent about wearing masks and need to really take this seriously. I think that people are just so burnt out from COVID. I think that's the main problem. Everybody realizes it's a problem, but nobody really wants to be inconvenienced by it. And, you know, I wish that there was something that was just mandated so that it would force people to behave, do what's right by themselves and for other people, but again, the problem is everybody's just so tired of it. But there is light at the end of the tunnel if we can just...
Get there.
Get there. And if people can just do the right thing for the next, you know, six months, because I really think it's going to be, you know, by the time everyone actually has the opportunity to get vaccinated, because it's going to be a two-shot series, and so it's going to be going in groups. I'm sure you've all read that, but it's not, it's not a matter of just a few months. It's going to be a little bit before we're all actually able to get through the tunnel, but honestly, that's it. People just need to care about themselves and care about others. But no, I don't have a magic answer. Sorry, I wish I did.
Well, I think everybody looks at us, but we do too, and we're, you know, we're struggling with this too, and what's the right balance, so, yeah.
Well, it's kind of like when somebody doesn't feel well, and they've spent their whole life not living correctly, and then they want to go to the doctor and get a magic pill. Well, you kind of have to do right by yourself throughout it so that you have a good end result. Well, it's the same with this. You have to kind of do the work throughout your life or throughout this period to actually see it through to the end, and so, but it's a good end result. But from the bar graphs and from the numbers right now, it's just not going in that direction, unfortunately.
Thank you.
Well, I disagree with one thing that you said there, and that is that everyone knows that there's a problem. I think that's part of the problem is there's a lot of people that don't recognize or don't wish to recognize that there is a problem. And that, while that percentage is dwindling every day, particularly if someone gets it, you know, their attitude changes pretty quickly. But if everybody recognized, as you insinuated, that there is a problem, a major problem, I think it would sure help a lot. But obviously, it's going to take more planning on our part and rules and crackdowns and enforcement, so.
Well, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
We'll move to item number two.
RFA 255-20, Resolution 20-2312, imposition of sales tax for jail project with Philip Smith Haynes County Administrator.
Good morning, Philip.
Good morning again, commissioners. So, hey, we have some good news after the struggle of COVID not going particularly well. The struggle for a jail project went pretty well on November 3. As the commission is well aware, you placed a question before voters at the general election regarding construction of a new jail and sheriff's office on a greenfield site, and that question did pass. The vote totals that the county clerk just showed me, it passed by about 1,800 votes. And so at this time, what staff is asking is that you go ahead and implement the results of that election in the form of a resolution which would impose a one-half percent countywide sales tax effective April 1 of 2021, and that we could get that submitted to the State Department of Revenue for implementation. They need to have the resolution and certified election results no less than 90 days prior to the calendar quarter in which we expect to implement the sales tax. So that would be in December and for an April 1 implementation. So at this time, staff is recommending that the commission adopt Resolution Number 20-2312, authorizing the levy of a special one-half percent countywide retailer's sales tax. Be happy to answer questions.
Are there questions or comments or whatever from any commissioners? Is there any public comment? We'll bring it back to the commission for action.
Mr. Chair, I move we adopt Resolution 20-2312 as presented.
Second motion. It has been moved, and secondly, we approve RFA 255-20, Resolution 20-2312, imposition of a sales tax for the jail project. There are further comments or questions from commissioners? If not, all of those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries 5-0. Thank you. Item number three.
RFA 256-20, Authorization for Design and Construction Services for Jail Project with Philip Smith Haynes County Administrator.
Okay, Phil.
One more time. So in addition to imposing the sales tax, staff is also seeking to continue work on the jail project by continuing our contracts with Trainer HL for Architectural Services and Turner Construction Company for Construction Manager at Risk Services. At the time that you entered into those contracts, you authorized only the pre-election services and directed staff to return for separate authorization for post-election services. So that is our request today. Obviously, the alternatives would be to authorize the work with the existing architect and construction manager, not authorize the work and direct staff to seek alternatives for completing the project or delay a decision. And as I said, staff recommends authorization of the work with the existing contractors that have brought us to this point. I'd be happy to answer questions, and Mr. Jeff Lane from Trainer HL is in attendance as well.
Jeff, do you have any comments that you'd like to make? Okay, I will open it to the commissioners then for questions or comments or...
I've got one question for the administrator. What do you project the cost to be prior to having some half-cent sales tax monies available? I know you're going to do that out of capital improvements fund?
Yes, so I would anticipate that we would spend up to, well, if we include land acquisition in that as well as the amounts that we've spent so far and the amounts that we anticipate spending, I would anticipate spending up to maybe 1.5 million prior to actually receiving the proceeds of bonds next summer. The good news is that the resolution that you just adopted in the prior action to impose the sales tax also includes the ability to go back and recapture any expenditures that we've made within 30 days of the date of that resolution, so 30 days prior to today, in those bond issues. So it would, it's really a matter of cash flow rather than where the money's ultimately coming from, because while you're correct that we would spend it initially out of the CIP, which has authorization for over $7 million in 2021, it would get reimbursed to the CIP once the bonds are issued.
Further comments?
Would it be possible to address a rough timetable? I know before the vote, we had a schedule of predictions, and you or Jeff, or maybe that's something for the future, I'm not sure.
I can take a stab at it, and Jeff can correct me, but if we secure a site in the next couple of months, I believe we are anticipating having most of the design work complete in the late summer and being able to proceed to bidding in the fall of 2021 and be able to open a new jail in 2023.
With using our CIP monies to start this, is that going to affect any 2021 projects that are slated to be done? Are they going to be held up, or is there monies available that it will be business as usual?
I anticipate that it will be business as usual. We did, we have a number of projects that were slated for the existing jail from prior years that have not been expended, and that totals well over $1 million. And so those are things that have already been held up, so to speak, pending the results of this. And so I don't see there being a problem with any of the 2021 projects, in particular, the radio project and the expo project should not be affected in any way.
Thank you.
At what point in time will we receive bond money? Will that be after the April 1st?
Yes. The exact date, of course, is, there's a whole bunch of work yet to be done with bond council to get to an exact date, but probably sometime in late summer. They would like to issue bonds as close to the construction as possible, because the earlier you issue, the more interest costs you have to pay. And if you don't actually need the money until you start into construction, you know, we're in the advantageous position of being able to cash flow a lot of the initial payments. Not every jurisdiction would be in that sort of a position, and so they would have to issue a little sooner. But we believe we can issue pretty late into the summer.
Well, that's some good news. I mean, this isn't like a bank loan that you want this project, and you've got to have the money today just to go get started, so we don't have to have that. So that's, like you said, an advantageous position for us to be in. Are there any other questions or comments from Commissioners? Is there any public comment? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the Commission for Action.
Mr. Chairman, I move we authorize the work for design and construction as presented.
Second motion.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve RFA 256-20, Authorization for Design and Construction Services for Jail Project. Is there further comments? If not, I'll call for a vote. All of those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. The motion does carry five to zero. Thank you, Phil.
We'll move to item number four.
RFA 257-20, UMR Administrative Services Agreement Renewal with Marilyn Lemur, Human Resources Director.
Good morning, Marilyn.
Good morning, Commissioners. This request is for an administrative services agreement with UMR. They are our third-party administrator that processes our claims for our health plan. This is very routine. UMR has been our TPA since about 2008. So your alternatives for action is to approve the renewal agreement for the upcoming, for the current plan year or reject it. The staff recommendation is to approve it. There's no additional impact to the budget. The renewal to our plan this year did result in a no-premium change for both the county portion and the employee portion.
Sounds good. Questions or comments from Commissioners? Any public comment? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the Commission for Action.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve by signature the UMR Administrative Services Agreement Renewal as presented.
Second motion.
It has been moved and seconded that we approve RFA 257-20, the UMR Administrative Services Agreement Renewal. Further comments? Hearing none, all of those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries five to zero.
Item number five.
RFA 258-20, Telemedicine Amendment to Health Plan with Marilyn Lemur, Human Resources Director.
Marilyn?
Hey, this request is to confirm the addition to our health plan telemedicine benefits. That allows an individual to call their doctor's office and do it either by phone or by video. We actually did add this at the beginning of the COVID crisis. So this is really just the paperwork to confirm that we did add that. So it falls under the same office co-pay as if somebody actually goes to the brick building where they're going to be seeing their doctors. So it falls under that $25 office co-pay. Alternatives for action is to sign the amendment or do not sign it. Recommendation is to sign it, and there's no additional budget impact.
Any Commissioners have any questions or comments? The tele, say it again for me, the tele.
Telemedicine.
Telemedicine seems to be quite the thing that's going on right now for obvious reasons. So are there any public comment? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the Commission for Action.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve the amendment as presented by staff.
Second motion.
It has been moved and seconded that we approve RFA 258-20, Telemedicine Amendment to the Health Plan. Further comments? If not, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. The motion carries.
And we'll move to item number six.
RFA 259-20, Formal Approval of Medical and Dental Plan Documents with Marilyn Lemur, Human Resources Director.
Hello, Marilyn, again.
Good morning again. This request is to formally approve the actual plan documents for both our medical prescription and dental plans. From time to time, there are changes that happen to our plan, and that previous request for action with adding the telemedicine is a good example of that. So when we do have those, every so often, we need to update our plan document just to incorporate everything into it. So this request is to formally accept those plans as presented. Alternatives for action is to sign the acceptance letters or do not sign them. The recommendation is to accept it and no additional budget impact.
All right. Any questions or comments from Commissioners? Public comment? Hearing none, we'll bring it back to the Commission for Action.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve by signature the acceptance letters for both medical and dental plans.
Second motion.
Been moved and seconded that we approve RFA 259-20, Formal Approval of Medical and Dental Plan Documents. Further comments? All of those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. The motion carries five to zero.
Thank you, Marilyn. We will move to informational items, and we'll start off with item number one.
Human Resources Update with Marilyn Lemur, Human Resources Director.
Okay, Marilyn, the floor is still yours.
Once again, this is the human resource update from mid-September to mid-November 2020. During this time, we've had eight new hires, seven that have transferred or promoted to a different position, and 10 that are no longer employed. One of the things that has kept us busy is fraudulent unemployment claims. Those are still on the rise right now. We had seven attempts the last time I reported this to you. When I wrote this, it was 31. As of today, it's 33 attempts that individuals have tried submitting an unemployment claim on our active employees. We'll continue to monitor respondent process requests for the emergency paid sick leave and the expanded family medical leave under the Families First Coronavirus Response Act. We did feel that we had a successful in-service day in October, did that virtually rather than in-person. And we did transition to a new online pre-employment clerical skills testing that we are using with user for one position, and it appears to work well. It's just to measure some basic clerical skills as a part of the selection process. So moving forward, fill vacant positions. Right now, we're actively recruiting for seven corrections officers, two home health registered nurse vacancies, and a heavy equipment operator. We expect that position to be filled in-house. Do have a blood drive scheduled in December, mid-December. Getting ready to open up our United Way campaign that we do with county employees. So we are busily trying to get some prizes for a drawing just to encourage that giving. Recruitment efforts for corrections officers, we have not had a lot of luck with that. We're having difficulty getting candidates for corrections officers. We've had these same vacancies since about July. We've used the newspaper, Kansas Government Jobs website, Indeed, social media, radio ads, TV ads, area billboards, schools, and then, of course, our own website where individuals can sign up to get an alert whenever we have an opening. So we've had, spent quite a few dollars on those types of advertising efforts. So we'd like to drive those recruitment dollars towards a temporary referral program, similar to what we have with the corrections officer hiring incentive. Try to use our employees to refer individuals for the corrections officer position. So if we were to align that with the corrections officer hiring incentive, it would be $500 as six months if the individual was successful in remaining there six months, and then $1,000 at one year. Current funding is available through the sheriff's office budget just because of these multiple vacancies. It would be capped at just these seven positions, so it would be a cost of $10,500 if we were able to fill all seven positions. So just would like to know if that is something that we could move forward with. And by the way, the sheriff is supportive of this.
Commissioners?
I mean, we're not voting on it right now. You're just saying to present something with us? Or are you asking for a vote?
I'm asking for if we can move forward with this. I can do a formal request for action if you would like me to do that.
Please proceed.
Proceed with doing it or with a request?
A request for action.
Okay, all right. I will do that.
Yeah, I don't think one week more delay on that is going to, if we've been months without being able, any success, one more week isn't going to hurt anything. So then we'll have more documentation in front of us to be able to act on.
Marilyn, while we're on that, is there any information you have that gives you some idea that you will be successful with this type of, are any other counties doing that? Is this?
There are counties that do a referral bonus. I, you know, we've tried so many different things. I just think it's just one more thing we can try. I'm not sure if we'll be successful, but it's certainly putting them out there and using our employees to help sell the position and hopefully get some successful candidates. Off the top of my head, I think Butler County does a referral incentive, and I think Geary County might, but I'm not too sure on that one.
Marilyn, just as a gut feeling, do you feel like the new jail will help this position? Better work conditions and?
I guess I'm going to go based on what the sheriff has visited with the sheriff of Reno County. Reno County got a new facility, and they seem to experiencing better retention for their corrections officer with their facility. We did check wages to see if we were comparable. I think we're about, kind of in the mid-range of our similar-sized counties. Some are higher, some are lower, so I think we're right about mid-range on those.
Other questions or comments? Marilyn, I noticed on here that 12 election workers were added during the, but I don't see any health department, you know, tracers or trackers or whatever they're called in here. I've heard comments from people that, is this a position that perhaps, if we're looking for part-time people, that they could do this? Someone who has an eight-to-five job could do this at home from 6:00 to 9:00 at night or something like that? Have we, and I put it on you to speak for the health department, is it a possibility that we could implement something like that to get more tracers involved? I know there's a lot of people that I've heard have expressed an interest, but they can't do it from 8:00 to 5:00, you know?
And in the hired section, there are four that we did hire during that time, four contact tracers that we did hire. We do have one that.
I'm sorry, I did miss that. I misspoke there.
And we have another one that is starting next week. I'm going to refer to Phil on this. I know he's had a conversation.
Yes, I've had a conversation with Jason Tiller. He has, he is considering a second shift, if you will, folks who can work after 5:00. That is not without its own set of issues around providing them with adequate training and supervision, and, you know, you're then tasking a supervisor to either flex their time or something. So it's something that he is considering, but he wanted to give it a little bit more thought before we implement it. But he does feel the need to maximize our available resources on contact tracing, given the difficulties that they're experiencing right now.
Well, to me, obviously, I mean, nothing's perfect in today's world, but I mean, if you were to take that personnel that oversees these people, perhaps, have them flex their hours from, say, you know, 1:00 to 8:00 or something like that, as opposed to an 8:00 to 5:00, you know, this is going to be a temporary thing, although that's what we said nine months ago, too. But, I mean, with the vaccine that's coming along, I think it's going to be shorter than we hope, than it looks like it's going to be. But any rate, if that helps at all, I think there need to be some people that need to say, yes, I will flex my time and I will work it, come to work at 1:00 instead of 8:00 or whatever that is. And I think we need to really take a hard look at that, because that's one of the things that we're hearing in the emails that I get, and we hear that, you know, that the contact tracer hadn't gotten back to me for three days and those kind of things. So whatever can help us there, we'd appreciate it.
I have one question on that. Is the contact tracing going on seven days a week?
My understanding is yes, they were doing six days. I believe they've now gone to seven.
All right. Any other questions or comments regarding Marilyn's report? If not, thank you very much, Marilyn. We'll move to item number two.
Livestock and Expo Update with Rick Lemur, Livestock and Expo Director.
Good morning, Rick.
Good morning, Commissioners. So this will be the September through November update for Expo Center Noxious Weed Department and County Farm. The Expo Center, since my last update, we've had 38 event days, seven events canceled and three moved to 2021. The Noxious Weed Department, I'll get my glasses straightened out here. An additional 1,361 and 1/2 acres were signed up for aerial spraying. Roadside spraying is complete for 2020, and the trucks have been winterized. County Farm scholarship applications are available for 2021. BEV have sent applications out to all the high schools, and you can also print an application out on the county website. The deadline to turn those in is March 31, 2021. Upcoming plans, Expo Center, we have 12 events scheduled for January and February 2021. The weed department plans on doing some brush spraying this fall and winter, weather permitting. County Farm, we still have a couple terraces that we need to get reworked and repair the flood damage. We'll be getting that done this winter. Rent payments are due December 1, totaling $34,494.75. Budget, expo budget used is 72.61%. Deposits for 2020 are $29,983.30. Weed budget used is 73.43%. Deposits for chemical sales for 2020 is $79,024.36. The weed special equipment fund balance is $67,456.45. And the farm account balance is $169,825.35. Moving on, I have a quick PowerPoint. Moving on, I have a quick PowerPoint. This was the last livestock show for the year. It's new to the Expo Center. The miniature fainting goat show next. The gal was kinda nervous about her turnout, but she ended up having over 300 goats, so, and it was a national show, so there were people from all over that showed up. Next, they ended up using all of our goat pens and actually moved into barn one and used part of it for pens. And she did sign a contract. They will be back next year. Next. 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 You can see it filled that whole barn. It's the first for me. This is the first silky fainting goat show I've had. We've had fainting goat, but not the silky. Next. Next. This is Salina Regional Hospital's annual fundraising rummage sale. They were kinda overwhelmed this year because back in March and April, everyone was cleaning out their closets, and it ended up in their lap, so they had plenty to offer. Next. You can see they filled that whole building with treasures. Next. Food distributions, next. Normally, we were having these one every three months. Now the state is doing one every month. Sometimes they have income guidelines on some of them, and some of them they don't. Next. It's my understanding that if you show up to one, you're not gonna get turned away. They will give you food. Next. Next. Sling County Health Department, drive-through flu shot clinic. It was a pretty popular spot that day. Next. There for a while, it actually went clear around that swimming pool, and we kinda had a traffic jam for a while, but other than that, it went pretty smooth. Next. 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 Salina Gun Show, they have two of these a year. This is a long-time event. I would say they've been over there for probably about 45 years with this same show. Next. Ficus Family Christmas Dinner, a couple changes this year. There will be no, no dine-in. What they're gonna do is you just come in the front doors of the 4H Building on Christmas Day from 11:00 to 2:00. You go around a U-shaped table, pick up your food, your toys, your candy, and you walk out the door. And if you don't have a mask, you won't, you won't get any food, you won't get in the building. And they will have deliveries, but do not call our office until Christmas Day from 7:00 to 10:00. If you call our office, they will arrange to deliver you some food. And that concludes my update.
All right, I, just as a clarification, the deposits so far for this year are about $30,000. What did we have budgeted for income? Wasn't it somewhere around $90,000?
Normally, last year, I think it was $90,000 that we deposited.
So we're gonna come up quite a bit short.
Quite a bit short.
That's, that's, now I'll give you the really tough one. I assume you've had dialogue on this, but Equafest?
Equafest, I've talked to Justine right now. I mean, she's booking her vendors like she normally would, but she is concerned, and she'll just go by, you know, whatever's happening with the county. If she needs to cancel it, I'm sure that's what, that's what will happen, because we did put a, addendum in our contract that if she does have to cancel because of COVID or something like that, that, you know, there won't be any penalties or anything like that. Of course, you won't get the money that was allocated by this commission for the show if it cancels, but so far-
Other than that, money, is there any cost to the county or the Expo Center, say, let's just, I'll use 30 days prior, will we have any money invested in that show that we would be on the hook for?
No, no. Everything I need for that show, I have sitting there. I mean, we'll, we'll wait and see kinda what they're gonna do before we start setting all that stuff up, but-
Sure.
The way it's going now, it's not looking good, but hopefully come March, it looks a little better than it looks now.
We got four months, but in, in this COVID world, four months is not very long.
Yeah, I mean, I have events called, because a lot of people are getting scared about it, so I have events called every couple days canceling because they just don't wanna risk it.
All right. Further comments or questions from commissioners, from Mr. Lamer? If not, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Rick.
All right, we'll move to item number three.
County administrators update with Philip Smith Haynes, county administrator.
Good morning, Phil.
Good morning again, commissioners. Three items for today. First, just an update on our coronavirus relief funding. With the accounts payable approved today, we are at 59% expended, and we have had contact with all of the folks who still have large balances outstanding, and most of them continue to reassure us that they are going to get the majority of their money spent, so that is good news. We also are accepting supplemental applications through tomorrow at 5:00 PM for any folks who either didn't get the funding they needed or have had new funding needs since July. We've received quite a number of those. We'll be meeting with the committee again on Thursday. So I think, generally speaking, it is going well in terms of getting that money expended, and we do have a state webinar this afternoon that I'll be participating in. The second item, another letter of support for KDOT. This time Presbyterian Manor has requested support of their application to the Department of Transportation for the chairman's signature, so just wanted to make you all aware of that, and by consensus, you can give the chairman the go-ahead to sign that. And then probably the item that might generate some discussion amongst the commissioners. Last night, I did speak with the Salina City Commission regarding the COVID-19 situation in the community. They had invited Health Director Tiller. He was unavailable, so I agreed to sub in for him, and the commission had quite a long discussion, I'd say probably in the neighborhood of, of two hours of conversation on this topic. And ultimately, they came to three actions, which are outlined in a letter that was sent to me this morning by city manager Mike Scraig, and I've provided each of the commissioners a copy of that letter at the dais this morning. The three actions are, as I said earlier, to direct staff to return next Monday with an amendment to the city's mask ordinance, and from our conversation a few minutes ago, I believe you're also directing county staff to return to you next Tuesday with a similar amendment to the county resolution. The second action from the city commission was to direct their staff to implement restrictions or return with proposed restrictions to city park and rec facilities, particularly the Salina Field House. And there was substantial discussion on that. Couple commissioners, I think, pretty clear that their intent was to cancel events, but they wanted to give a week's notice, so to speak, and there are a few other commissioners that I think were hoping that there would be something short of a full closure of the facility, that some activities could continue. And then the third action that the commission took, the Salina City Commission took last night, was they passed a motion which acknowledges that health-related matters associated with COVID-19 are appropriately managed by the county and the county health department, and they are encouraging us to identify and implement additional measures intended to address the recent increase in active cases and hospitalizations in Sling County. So they talked about a number of different, well, actually, they didn't have a lot of discussion on that, but staff, county, city staff had given them some examples of things that that might mean. They left it very open-ended in their motion, just encouraging the, the county to take some sort of action, take, sort of take the lead on this issue. Things that they noted include restricting operational hours for bars and restaurants, capacity limits on bars and restaurants, mass gathering limitations, encouragement of teleworking, those sorts of things. So those are all, I think, things that this community or this entire state has, has been through once before, and we are starting to see in a number of other communities around the state, there's news reports pretty much every day that this community or that community has, has implemented some type of a restriction. The, the White House is also issuing now state-by-state reports, and the emergency manager provided me the latest White House report for Kansas this morning. Recommendations from the, the White House include a number of things. I'll just try and read some of them. Current mitigations are inadequate and must be increased to flatten the curve, to sustain the health system for both COVID and non-COVID emergencies. We should incentivize folks under 40 to get tested. We need to, well, it says, "An effective practice to decrease transmission in public spaces includes limiting restaurant indoor capacity to less than 25% and limiting bar hours until cases and test positivity decrease. Consider pausing extracurricular school activities, even though athletics in particular are not necessarily transmission risks, but the surrounding activities are where transmission is occurring. Work with hospitals to improve reporting of data. Reinforce messaging to university students to continue mitigation actions on and off campus. Recruit local influencers to message to communities to not gather without a mask with individuals living outside of your household. Always wear a mask in public places. Stop gatherings beyond immediate household until cases and test positivity decrease and get a flu shot. Continuously monitor and testing and contact tracing capacity to ensure rapid turnaround. Stay vigilant with regard to spread among nursing home staff and residents. Ensure that nursing homes assisted living and elderly care sites have full testing capacity. Ensure all hospitals have access to antivirals, antibodies, PPE, and ventilators." And so some of those things are obviously more in the purview of the state than individual counties, but that is recommendations from the White House. So I'd be happy to try and answer any questions if there are any, but more importantly, I suppose, is to seek any direction from the commission about anything that you would want staff to either implement immediately or to bring back to you next week or at a special meeting to, to get implemented. So that is my report, and I'll seek feedback.
Well, at this stage of the game, it seems appropriate to me that we can take this apart a little bit further, but I would like to instruct you, or with the permission of the other commissioners, to work closely with the city manager's office for the next couple of days in identifying, or, you know, maybe what, what their plans are in, in terms of what we can piggyback onto or go further than. I mean, we need to work hand-in-hand with those guys, and to wait until next Monday to see what their plan is, is, is pretty tough. Some of the things that they've identified in here have to do with the schools, and I, I have a hard time getting into the, the business of running the schools. I know that something came out from USD 305 today regarding sports activities, that they will restrict out-of-town teams to no visitors, zero. The teams cannot bring anybody other than the players and the coaches, and restricting it to two immediate family members for the in-town team. So they're, they're taking their steps that they can with that portion of it, to tell them that, that they have it in here at an appropriateness of in-person schooling and wanting them to school from home. I, you know, I have a hard time telling the schools that they need to do anything, to be honest with you. I mean, I, I just, I think we need to get involved with mass gathering limitations. We do need to encourage the, the teleworking from home for any business that can do that. I, I think we need to look at or help with operational hours of bars and restaurants and capacities. It troubles me when I see businesses, most businesses in town have, have the ordinance sign up at their door. You must wear a mask when you enter this place. Some don't. I think that is a thing that should happen. I know that I've even caught myself starting to walk into a business without my mask on, and I go immediately back to the car when I see that sign, get my mask. I think that needs to be something that can be addressed. I, I think it, I think some of this enforcement needs to fall into the business. If the businesses don't wanna make people wear the mask in their business, somehow or another, there should be a penalty for them doing, taking that action or no action. That's my opinion. But I, we, we can't leave here today without giving some instruction and, and some guidelines and some thoughts on this, so.
Mr. Chair, just a comment on, on what the city has done, and I appreciate your comment that we ought to have conversations with the city. I do not agree that we ought to piggyback on what they do. I think that we ought to take the lead, and I think it's appropriate, and I think that the community and the county, they're looking to us to take the lead. So again, appreciate all the conversations that Mr. Philip Haynes is gonna have with the city, but I think we need some conversation here. I'm not saying how I would vote or whatever, but, you know, this is obviously getting out of hand quickly.
Well, and, and my comment on piggyback with them is, is the wrong term to use. I meant work hand-in-hand with them, is what I'm trying to say. Not let them adopt something and we say, okay, well, we're on board with that. That's, that's not what I intended that to sound like, but it did.
And, and also, you could probably take that to the school board. I, I think that they're in charge of their own destiny, but their, their conversations or comments to us, I would appreciate, you know, what they're thinking, too, so, but-
But yeah, your point is, you're, you know, we're the county commission, not the-
But, yeah, your point is, you know, we're the county commission, not the school boards.
Well, I have long said that, that the city and the county and the school board don't really let each other know what they're doing until it's a done deal. And this is one time when we probably should have known something like that ahead of time, and so.
One comment. I really believe that our health director is going to have to be very involved in drafting whatever comes up, and we can't do anything until he's available. And I also think, in what Commissioner Shadwick said, is the city has ideas of what they would like to see done, and it would be remiss of us to pass an ordinance that doesn't take into account their concerns and such, and then they would have to do their own. They have the capability of drawing up their own ordinance. I mean, they've done that, but why have two competing ones out there? So, I think any input they have into this, so we can make this document what is best for the county. And I think that Jason's going to have to be deeply involved in whatever that verbiage is, and taking into account the wishes of the city and the county, both commissions.
Commissioner, what do you think about the timeline and getting together? I mean, this, I don't want this to have to happen on a Tuesday. I mean, if we need to come back on a Friday, or, you know, I mean...
I have, no problem with that, I just...
I don't know that that's possible, because, again, your point is well-taken about Jason. You know, Jason needs to take the lead on this, and with some discussion from us, but I think sooner than later.
I mean, we can leave that up to you to try to facilitate a meeting, perhaps, then, this week, or is that, I mean, I'm...
I'm asking you guys, what do you guys think?
Well, this is a crisis. It's as simple as that. I mean, put it off another week, and another week, and then they can't get together? I mean, I think there should be something scheduled for Thursday, probably Friday would be, would get something going, and if you can be there, you can be there, and if you can't, you can't.
Even if it's before Monday? I mean, I just don't, before Tuesday, it could be Monday morning, it could be whenever.
Well, we need to have it before their meeting, before our meeting. That's why I'm saying earlier that it was tough for us to come, you know, 12 hours after their meeting and start tackling something. One thing that I noticed in watching the meeting last night, the fieldhouse seems to be a hot subject, hot topic. I mean, it was packed this weekend, and I know their commission is split on whether they should limit that or not, or close it. And they're asking us to implement additional measures intended to address the recent increase in active cases, and yet they're purporting that they've got all these tournaments coming to town, and all kinds of people, and those two things don't match.
And no masks.
And they just don't match. To limit the number of people in a building, I mean, I don't, I don't know what a guideline there would be, but I certainly want to look at that. People are going to do what they want to do, and they're wanting us to institute laws, and those that want to follow this are going to follow the rules, and those that don't aren't, and they're going to be, they're part of the problem. And we've got another issue. It's commerce versus the health. You know, the businesses want to stay open, they don't want to limit people coming into their business, but then the health department, or not the health department, but the health officials say, "We need to shut down. We need to slow up." So, we've got an issue there, so.
Mr. Chair, I have a couple of questions. How about, and some thoughts. When is our health director available?
He is not going to be back in the office until Monday, the 30th. I can see whether he would be available by phone before then.
Okay. And my comment is...
We do have, of course, a backup health officer, and he has staff. I mean, there is a, there is a system in place, so I don't think it's dependent upon one human being being here, so.
Okay. I guess my point is, I don't want to use the word "phase," but we've been at this situation before. We've got a little bit of knowledge behind us, the same players involved to make a recommendation, and I concur, it needs to dovetail with the city's thoughts and wishes for one document, whether the 10-headed monster can all agree, who knows? But ASAP and a special meeting, I'm sure we're all available, and it could be, be more than happy to listen.
My thought, a little bit of it, is that the city and the county have both been a little bit remiss in that, I mean, we knew this was kind of coming. We've seen it, and we've played right along, but I think we need to look down the pike, and we need to tell the public that, hey, if these numbers reach this level at this date, here's some additional things that are going to happen. I mean, we're going to, whatever those additional things are, but I think the public needs to know that, rather than we come in on a Monday morning, and all of a sudden we've got 316 cases that we had last week, or whatever we had, and everybody's clamoring, "Man, you got to do something." Well, you know, we're, we should do something, don't get me wrong, but I think down the pike, December 31st or February 1st, if we've reached this level, here's what's going to happen, and I think the public needs to know that.
Mr. Chair, I have a question for the administrator. When we get together next time, and you might want to find out what other counties are doing as far as enforcement. I've always felt like we can make any law that we want to, law, recommendation, whatever, but it is definitely being flaunted in Saline County. I mean, we have numerous restaurants in town that, you know, their employees don't even wear masks, and, you know, what is available? What does our enforcement, law enforcement think is appropriate to do? And maybe there isn't anything we can do, I don't know. I just didn't know what other counties are doing, and put some teeth into whatever, whatever we decide. Again, I'm not saying I would, I will go along with everything, but if this commission decides a vote, then I think that it needs to be enforceable.
Well, and I've got enforcement highlighted here, you know, because obviously enforcement within the, in the city limits, who does that fall on? Does that fall on the police department, the health department? Do we all put on our commissioner's badge and stand at the door and count the number of people that go in there? How do we, how do we control all of that? And those are the things that need to be identified.
Maybe we can't. I mean, I think it needs to be part of the conversation, and again, it's the reason why we do have to be, bring the city commission on board, because they would be in charge of enforcing within the city, I would assume.
So, I'll just say that a health order, an order of the local health officer can be enforced by police and sheriff's deputies. There's no, Jason doesn't have a badge.
Right.
So, the health order needs to be written in such a way that that enforcement is requested. But, yeah, that's, that would be the...
If that could be part of the conversation on Friday or Monday, whenever we meet, I would appreciate that.
You know, another thing is getting the message out there. I mean, we've got, Salona Media Connection is here at all of our meetings. They're live, they go on replay several times during the week. I mean, our newspaper is not here, we don't, I don't know where the radio stations get their information, or how that comes out. Do they just get that from your Hannah's update of the day? So, maybe we need to be more detailed. I don't know, and how we get the, how we get the, they seem to know how many people are getting coronavirus, but they don't get the message on what they're supposed to be doing.
One more question, if I could. Do we, do we know, do we talk very often with the hospital and their thoughts on things, or?
And the hospital is an entity unto themselves, and so, the communication is occurring. I mean, they've provided us some numbers, and they've, they did do an update over the weekend, I believe it was posted Friday night. Dr. Freelove, who's their chief medical officer, posted a video to Facebook around hospital capacity and what that means. Essentially, to sort of paraphrase it, he says, "They are at or near capacity, but that changes sort of hourly during the day." And that is not all related to COVID, that it is not at all unusual for them to be at or near capacity during the winter months from flu and other seasonal illnesses, as well as, you know, your typical emergent care. So, yeah, that's sort of the latest from them. So, I've heard some consensus on a meeting, but I'm not sure what that means, frankly. I think there's willingness of the commission to have a special meeting later this week. I'm not sure if that's a special meeting of this body, or if that's an invitation for a joint meeting, or, I'm not quite sure what we're meeting about, frankly.
Well, the way I took Monty's direction was that it would be an invitation to where we work with the...
Or, and I don't know, I don't know the answer. I just, to answer your question, yes, I see a meeting of us voting on something, or taking action, potential action, or get public input, that's how I see it. You know, after your conversations with the city manager, or taking some of, you know, their thoughts, obviously, the city commission is always welcome to our meetings.
The issue is, then, if they have a quorum, and they need to call their meeting, too.
Yeah, you're right, you're right.
However, I'm just thinking ahead of that, just a little bit, is that if we have a Friday meeting, we're, this county commission is going to meet Friday afternoon. Let's just say that, and go over some of these things. And if the city has some input, or would like to be convened at the same time, they're welcome.
Because I feel like staff needs time to do some research of what other counties are doing. I think staff needs to reach out to the others. You know, Jason by telephone, I appreciate his comments, and we have a plan in place that somebody else can do it, too. But I, we got to give staff some time to come up with some of these things, too, because, you know, we maybe could vote on something today, but I don't know if it'd be an informed decision.
It wouldn't. We could, and it wouldn't, you're right.
Right, so.
I mean, what is, what is the number of people that should be limited into a building, you know? Yeah, we don't know, we don't, and that's what people want us to do right now. They want some action today, I can tell you that.
They do, but, they do, but I probably am not the person that knows that number. I mean, I would rely on somebody smarter than me to say this is appropriate, or whatnot, so.
Mr. Chairman, I really believe that as a body, we need some guidance. We need a document drawn up that has the concerns. You know, this document's going to, if it touches the commerce side, it's going to be 99% of the city that's going to be impacted by this. So, I think it would behoove us to take, take a measure of what the city commissioners are asking, and get a document drafted and put together. I don't know if it'd do us any good to sit around and argue about 25% in a business, or 50% in a business, or masks back on between sips, or, I think we need a document by a health director, someone who specializes in that and has the research and the numbers to put together something. Hopefully, we can do that and have something that meets the needs of the city fathers. I don't know. If not, they can tweak it, so. But I don't know if we can develop that document. I think that needs to come from, from our health director, or someone in that field.
Well, I hate to put it on the health director when it comes to limiting the number of people that are in somewhere. I mean, theirs is more of health decisions for me, but, you know, the hours of operation, I mean, they can have input on that, you know, like when they should be closing, or what the benefits are of that, but...
So, I think what I'm hearing is that you would like us to schedule a special meeting for the end of this week, and you would like us to draw up a proposed health order, and we will seek the guidance of the health officer on those things, and then allow this commission, with public input, to modify whatever the health officer has proposed.
And in this case, the health officer would be Dr. Doopy, because Jason's gone?
I'll try and get ahold of Jason, and if not, it will be Dr. Doopy.
And I also like what Commissioner Wiesa said, but it needs to, I mean, if you feel like you need more than Friday to get it done, I mean, I'm okay with Monday morning, or something like that. I just want you to, I think that there's a consensus that sooner than later, but we also don't want to rush it, you know, have a bad policy go out, too, because we didn't have enough time, but sooner than later for me, I guess. I'm available.
So, the meeting time basically is contingent on when these guys can get it all put together, all the players?
Right.
Something to dovetail with the city's thoughts and ideas.
And whenever that falls, I mean, whatever day that that falls.
That's where I'm coming from. Does that help you with your question, or your guidance, I'm guessing?
It does.
I agree with you, Commissioner, and, but, you know, in their letter to us, it says that they want the lead to be the Saline County and the county health department to identify and implement additional measures.
I'm okay with taking the lead, but input is fine.
Yeah, well, that's, that's why I said, we're going to have this meeting at such a time, and they're invited to come if they so want.
You bet.
And, Mr. Commissioner, I agree with everything, and I'm behind it all. The one, one of the biggest things I still, and go back to the situation, where who and how do we enforce it? You know, and that's, that's one of the biggest things I think you, that we need to really focus on, too, is, is understanding what we've all done, and what guidance we produce out of the meetings, is that, okay, then how can the businesses and how can everybody enforce it? I think that's...
And that's a good point, and then just to take it further, too. I don't want any comments that I've said today that's saying how I'm going to vote, because I don't know what I'm looking at, and I still want public input to me, and people feel comfortable that they can come up and view their points, and, you know, I might vote against whatever comes up on Friday or something, but, but, yeah, because the enforcement might not be enough, or it might be too tough on small businesses. I don't know. It's just, I think we have to take the next step, though. We just can't push it down the road.
A good part of the enforcement, I think, has to come from the citizens themselves. They have to police themselves. You have to police that person that walks in the store beside you and walks alongside of you without a mask, and, you know, either A, get away from them, or ask them, "How come they don't have a mask on?" Non-confrontational, I might add, but, you know, those are, the citizens have got to take a stand in this, too. So, that's, are we clear?
Yes, sir. I believe we are. I will get something put together as best I can.
Yeah, and we're dumping a ton on you, not that you didn't have anything else to do, anyway, so. Okay, item number four, and that's commissioners' comments. Anybody have anything? Under an announcement, I will tell you that we will be closing the meeting today, and then we will have a follow-up with our ballot count that will last for a few minutes, so...
Well, could I?
No. No, public comment is closed, was an hour and a half ago. So, I would take a motion for adjournment.
I'm moved.
I'm moved.
Second.
Been moved in second, but we adjourned today's meeting. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Do we, Jamie, it looks like we need a... Do we, Jamie, it looks like we need a. Okay. At this time, I would like to reconvene a meeting of the Celine County Board of Canvassers to get the final results on our election. So at this time, I'll turn it over to Jamie Doss.
Okay. So yesterday you had, I had presented all of the provisional ballots and you had voted on, on all of those. And the ones that you accepted or approved for counting was 598. And then you also approved 27 partial counts. So that would be a total of 625. So that's what I presented to you today. In the last two columns, you'll see the total between those two for the 625 ballots that were counted by our election board that processed those yesterday. So I'm just asking for a motion to approve those totals.
Second. Been moved in second that we approve the total votes that have been tabulated by the Celine County Clerk's Office. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries four zero.
Okay. The next, I have two more items. After tallying all the votes, we had two that, two races that were tied. So we will need to break those ties. One of them is for the township trustee for Smolon Township. We had Brandon Carlson with three votes and Verna Hullett with three votes. So I would recommend having Brandon Carlson be heads and Verna Hullett be tails and for the chairman to flip the coin on that one.
I will flip a coin and I'll ask Commissioner Wees to make the call. When I, I will let it. Whoop. I guess I won't. I'll catch it next time. And it is?
It is tails.
Okay.
And is there another coin flip?
Yeah. Actually, we have four people that tied for the Washington Township treasure. So I have Greg Lance with one vote, Jed Burr with one vote, Mike Weintheer with one vote and Terrell Ossen with one vote. So I would suggest doing a drawing on that case. So.
Okay. I'll ask Commissioner Sparks to draw a number out of the and report that number to you. Greg Lance.
Okay. All right. So that concludes all of our ties. So that is all I have.
That would conclude our meeting of the Board of Canvassers?
Yes.
Okay. That having been said, I will ask for a motion for adjournment.
Second.
Been moved in second that we adjourn today's voter canvass. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. We are adjourned. Thank you for watching.